In the cab. Mr. Carson.
Thank you.
Mr. Valman, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Hey, I'm just gonna follow up with some quick questions about these two pro formas and then I think the chair says I go back into where I left off last month or two months ago, okay?
Okay.
Just on the pro formas, you mentioned the AVI and the 3%, you remember that? You said they weren't included as expenses of my pro forma?
Correct.
They don't have to, those are pass-throughs, aren't they?
They are pass-throughs, you're talking about on the employee model or the lease model?
Employee.
On the employee model, when you say they're a pass-through, they are, I report them to the TA as part of my revenue figure, but on my income statement, my income statement, there are reduction in my revenue, there's my revenue, then there's less the trip charge, the excise tax is not gonna put up there because that's like the sales tax, but it would reduce your revenue, so when my revenue in my income statement doesn't even have the excise tax built into it, like you wouldn't have sales tax built into it, you're taking that number to put it in your revenue.
Okay.
And it shouldn't be up there.
I can book those as liabilities though, correct?
Book them, you can, for sure you can, but they can't show in your revenue.
So it doesn't have to be on the income statement if it's on my balance sheet?
Well, you can't show the revenue on your income statement if you're not gonna show the reduction as they go out, it can't be shown as revenue.
But you would agree with me that I could book it as a liability and pay it that way?
I think you can book any expense as a liability, sure.
Okay, let me ask you this, you've been around, you see my employee model, you've seen this, there's a line item for depreciation expense, did you see that?
Yes.
Is that a real expense? Do I have to come out?
It's not, it's not a cash flow expense, it's a, it's a real expense, but it is not a cash flow, it doesn't affect your cash flow status.
So let me, I looked at my employee model and it says depreciation expense, 289,000, I'm not paying 289,000, am I?
No, you paid it for when you bought the cars, in the case of loan, but I mean, it's, it is money, it is expense because you're setting it aside to replenish your fleet later, it's a depreciation, yes.
But it's not like-
It's not a cash.
I'm not writing a check for that amount of money.
Correct.
So if I wasn't really writing a check for 300, 289,000, my revenues or my bottom line would look a little bit better?
If you didn't expense depreciation, yes.
And that's a pretty big bill for 300,000 for my small company?
Sure.
Okay, so that would actually make it look a little bit healthier?
Yes, you would have no money to buy new cars, but yes, if you weren't setting money aside for the whole idea of depreciation, but yes, it would increase your, if you did not expense depreciation, your income would go up.
Okay, do your drivers pay for damage in alcohol accidents?
Yes and no, if a driver in the majority of accidents, I can't say the majority, a good portion of accidents, if it's a driver's fault, he loses his job, so no. If, in fact, we decide to retain that driver as, the maximum that he could pay towards an accident is a couple thousand dollars, so not, if it's a $10,000 accident, he's totaled my car, the max he could ever pay if we retained him was $2,000, so kind of yes and no.
Okay, so that would cover some of your SIR costs?
No, the S, it's completely a separate deal.
Okay.
The S, yeah, the SIR is, is for fixing somebody else's car and, and the bodily injury and the legal on the liability side, the expense that I would charge a driver would be is if he's done damage to my car.
Right, so if he gets in an accident, obviously there's a, his car and, or the other car and your car, so there's damage to both vehicles. The other vehicle, you're responsible for a $25,000 SIR, whether it's property damage, bodily injury, et cetera.
Legal, everything, yes.
Everything, okay, but if you get money back from your driver, does that go to SIR or does that go, now is it 27,000 or does that go to your bank account?
If I get money from my driver, it would usually be booked to reduce my expense to fix my car.
Okay, so you're getting some money-
If the driver's retained, we'll charge the driver $10 a shift to pay towards the damage to the tax cap.
You mentioned something about your dispatchers, am I correct when you said that they multitask? They do more than one thing, they don't just answer the phone call?
Our universal, our universal dispatch, which is the service that we use, those people are answering the phone, we have a IVR, which is a computerized answering system like most people have now, so between the IVR answering the phones and the dispatchers answering the phones and the dispatchers communicating with the driver, so they're monitoring in our cabs, if you have an emergency, there's a foot pedal you can hit inside the cab that flashes a green light on the car and notifies the dispatcher, so that dispatcher can reach out to the cab driver, so they're fielding calls from the cab drivers over the meter and the radio as well as phone calls that are coming in, so when you say multitask, they're all doing, it's not multitask like they're also cleaning the lot, they're, they're in a room like this and all they're doing is handling phone calls from the outside looking for a car or dealing with outside calls looking for lost and found or my drivers calling in about emergencies, the tax cap authority, those kinds of things, but they're not multitasking. But I, I mean, the day-to-day operations, the scheduling, who's gonna be working in operations, running our office, watching the statistics, the cost of running the shop, all of that stuff, as well as he would be the person that, my GM is the person that would be dealing with the exit interviews, terminations, you know, a lot of those touchy questions, but he's managing all the managers.
When you first started out as the owner, president and all that, would you ever fill in for some of these tasks if your company needed it?
When I first started out, yeah, I would say I was the, I was the general manager. I mean, I kinda consider myself still the general manager.
Were you the owner, general manager or just?
I'm one of the owners, I mean, my family owns it, not me.
Right.
Right, so, but I'm just the one that works there, yeah.
Okay, so as an owner, you're, it's not unreasonable to fill in and do jobs that need to be done?
No.
Okay, so would it be reasonable to say that myself or Claudia can fill in and do some of the jobs if there's a lacking?
I think that's, no, I don't think that's unreasonable, I would, I would think that that would be, if it's your business, I would hope that's what you would be doing.
Right.
Yeah.
And I was gonna ask this, but I think, I would hope the answer's no, is that today you don't fill in for anything, do you?
All the time.
Okay.
Yeah, bet.
Okay.
There every day.
Yeah, well, I know, I think me and you used to have monthly talks for hours on end about the industry and stuff like that. You gave us, Mr. Winter talked about these, I guess these work orders that are your exhibits, I just wanna touch on it real fast, right? Had the, where you came up with the 25 cents per mile?
Yes.
And that included the maintenance fees, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if you look at my pro forma again, I have 25 cents.
Count on which performance?
Actually, both of them.
This is just the straight lease structure?
Okay.
That's the one you're talking about?
Either way, let's just go to that, let's go to the lease structure just for clarity. I have, I included 25 cents, correct?
Strike me to a page, I'm trying to do.
What are we looking for?
The 25 mechanics fee. Maintenance, page five, yeah, 25 cents a mile for maintenance, yes.
Okay. What page are you on?
Page five.
Which, are you on the-
Maintenance.
Are you on the lease one or?
Yeah.
At least the lease model.
No, we're on the lease model. Yeah, it's the second paragraph from the-
Okay, got it.
Okay, so on your numbers with the 25 cent, I've included mechanics fees, correct?
I, no, you have mechanics not in it, you asked me the question again, what did you ask me?
Okay, if, if your understanding in your testimony is, is that 25 cents per mile should be your maintenance, that absolutely includes paying your mechanics, is that correct?
At my business, yes.
Okay, so if that was my business and I had 25 cents and my mechanics were included in there, on page four, where I list mechanics, two of them for $17, isn't that kind of a double bill? I mean, I don't, I don't need that expense then, I can take that expense off.
I would say yes.
Okay, so that was $74,000 a year that I don't now need to pay?
At my operation, that is included in the 25 cents.
Okay, so assuming mine is similar to yours because it's a lease thing, I can strike this mechanics two for 17 because it's already included in the 25 cent maintenance? So you, would it be fair to say that I can now just take that expense off since I'm kind of already including it in the 25 cent per mile?
Yeah, you seem to be accounting for it twice.
Okay.
Yes.
So one of them comes off, all right. And then that would also help my bottom line? If I don't have that extra 75,000 in expenses?
It would, it would reduce one of your, one of the expenses that I had in the issue, it wouldn't change though, revenue side, but it would include, it would reduce one of those expenses, yes.
And you, I think in either your testimony or your interrogatories, you mentioned that you lease out a lot for like $3,000 for your cars to park?
I was leasing a lot for $3,500, yes.
Okay, that was for your cabs or was it for your drivers?
That was for my cabs.
Okay, and when those cabs on that lot needed repair, would you just drive them over to the multi-service leasing property?
I made the arrangement to lease those spots and never actually ended up using them.
Okay.
Because it was the time when we believed that my tenant was gonna need much more room at my place, so we made the negotiated deal, so much per spot, and then we never actually had to put anything down there, and we, we ended up putting some stuff, but it had nothing to do with the cab, it would've been my motorhome and some, you know, junk to get off of my lot.
Oh, your, your car collection?
Yeah.
No, that's not car, a bunch of junk.
That you still have them thrown away?
I don't like throw things away.
Virgin, do your drivers on the individual lease, do they keep the car for the week?
I would say almost exclusively, I could be, there might be a driver or two that leases that maybe leave, I mean, I've seen a Virgin Valley lease car parked in my employee parking lot, so there may be some occasions where they leave it there, but I'm, I'm, I would think more likely that's a, a team lease driver that has left the car there for his teammate to pick up, so yes, most of them take them home and they have them for, my leases are, it's a weekly lease, but it's really only for six days, they get it for six days 24/7, the individual lease.
You mentioned you have kind of, for your leases, you kind of have a hybrid base rate and mileage?
Yes.
Is that for every driver? Or do you, do you modify it based upon the individual?
It's for every lease, it's not for employees.
Right.
Every, yes, every-
I can't come to you and say, I'll give you $800 and you're like, no, because I do 500 in mileage?
We have different lease rates, we have a four lease, we have a weekly lease, we have a shared lease, but each of those leases is the same for everybody that's doing that lease.
I got you.
It doesn't, it doesn't-
Your four days the same as the four day and your weeks the same as a week?
Everybody that's leasing weekly pays the same base, everybody that's leasing four days pays the same, they're, all the bases are the same, now that base could change based on economies, what would be going on, but our bases are the same, they don't change from person to person.
I heard that one of the cab companies was charging up to $1,100 a week, have you heard that?
I have not heard that, but again, I guess they could get away with it, I'd find that hard to believe, but against anything is possible.
Okay. You mentioned that Virgin had a waiting list lease, waiting list for lease cabs, so if one of them's on vacation, somebody wants to fill in?
Yeah, so we have, our leases are all full and we have drivers, some of our drivers that are driving for Desert Cab that are employees that don't want to leave, but have said, if a lease becomes available, I would like to take it, and we have shared with them, well, there might be leases that become available, but they're probably only gonna be temporary because somebody's going to leave, a lot of our drivers are from other countries and they don't go for a week to go home because it takes a week to get home, so they go for a month, so when they go for a month, we'll find an employee that can just fill in that spot for us so I don't lose anything, but he knows perfectly well in four weeks, five weeks, six weeks that he's gonna go back to be an employee, so that, so I have that to move over.
So every one of your lease, every one of your medallions is booked up with lease drivers?
No.
For Virgin?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, why would there be a waiting list if you could just put a driver in today?
I don't have the cars.
How many cars do you have?
I have 122 cars and 132 medallions.
Okay. Are you planning on getting 10 more cars?
I've been trying to buy cars, it's just hard to buy them.
So you wanna buy cars?
When, in the, from, we have gone from, we've probably added 50 or 60 cars over the last year, but it's not easy to find a car and you gotta turn it into a cab, so it's not a quick process.
I understand, but if you moved up from 50 to 60 this year, plan on putting another 10 into service, would you say that there's a demand for the lease caps?
I, I would, I would think I could probably lease out if, if I had some more cars, I could probably lease a few more cars, yeah, I would, I would, again, we're not turning a lot of people away, we have people that are, like I said, that are employees that work for us that have asked about it, but, yeah, so it's, it's hard to know because I think the industry kind of knows, so, so I don't have some big giant waiting list of people waiting to lease cars from me, and again, even if I did, the, the margin of whether it is worth going to purchase a brand-new car and all the costs that go with it, you know, because I can go buy a car tomorrow and have it ready, but with the price of what a car costs and all the other costs to go with it, I'm not really chomping at the bit to do that, when I told you that my, the number of cars in Virgin Valley grew, it grew because the TA changed the rules and allowed us to keep the cars a lot longer and got rid of the rule that you had to buy a car less than 30,000 miles, so I have taken cars that are Desert Cabs and repainted them and made them into Virgin Valleys, so I can basically buy that car from Desert Cab for a couple thousand dollars rather than 30-some thousand, so then the economics worked for me to lease it over here because I didn't, the car was very, very, very cheap, not $30,000, and I'm able to do that because I have a test companies that come in, buy the cars for Desert Cab, so I get a brand-new car that somebody's paying 50%, 75% of the price of the car, so I'll add it to the Desert fleet and I'll just take an older Desert and move it into Virgin Valley, so again, puts me in a kind of a different scenario than other people, I don't wanna speak to how they run their operations, but Desert, Virgin Valley would have not grown by 50 cars if I went and had to buy 50 cars because, again, it wouldn't pencil for me to do that, but when I can buy a car for, again, I sell them from Desert Cab to, to Virgin Valley for $1,000, the meter costs $1,000, so I sell, I sell it for $1,000 because I have Desert Cab which are getting these basically almost free cars.
Okay, so let me, the roundabout way is that, let's just say, from the beginning of this year, you were operating 50 leases?
Well, no, it was considerably more than that, it was probably 70.
Okay, and now up through October, you said you added 50 cars, is that right?
From, I, I've, I've started, I, this would've been from the beginning of '21 until now, so that's actually 21 months maybe, it's, it's all of '21 and all of '22, it's grown from around 70 leases up to where it is now, which is, and when I have 111, I mean, 122 cars, I don't have 122 leases, I mean, you have a good chunk of those cars or the fill-in cars because of constant breakdowns and all the different things that happen, so there's probably, you know, 100 leases maybe, or maybe a little less than that, but in that range, gonna have 20-some spare cars.
And if you decided to buy those 10 more cars, you believe that you'd have no problem filling those as, as lease drivers?
I don't know that for a fact, because of, yeah, I, I don't know that for a fact.
Just in your opinion?
I think that if I had owned the more cars, I could probably lease some of them, I don't know how many that is, but I think I could lease some of them, sure.
Okay, have you ever taken out a commercial warranty for any of your vehicles?
No.
Do you know what that is?
I mean, I've heard it advertised, but-
Is that something feasible or why I think you looked into it?
The, the only, the only two that were ever, that I ever saw that I saw advertised on television, I called and when they said it was a tax cap, they said, no, that was not it.
Speaking of tax cabs, who's doing your digital tops now?
Firefly.
Firefly, is that Chris or what's it all?
Yeah.
But-
But yes.
They don't, they don't drill into your cap, don't they just put like luggage rack on top of it now and mount it that way?
Well, yeah, but the, the wires have to come, it's, it's electric, so the wires come through our headliner, through the roof.
Okay, they do all that though, you told me before last, right?
Well, again, my tax caps already had signs on them, so as they're converting them, they're basically just taking off the old static sign and putting on that sign and using the wires already had there, so, yeah, they're, they're putting on their own signs, but the cars were already had signs on them.
Okay, your testimony earlier was that the shared lease that I projected is reasonable, that I can get shared leases, it's just not the amount that you, that I put down there, is that your concern?
I don't know, you're the one that wouldn't ask these people, nobody that we have talked to was willing to pay the same amount to lease a car and share it as what you would offer it to them to have it independently, it just-
Let's break that down, I understand, let's break that down, is the concept of a shared lease reasonable assumption on my behalf?
I believe that you can do some shared leases, yes, it's nowhere near, it's not what the industry, when I say industry, I don't mean the industry, the tax cap industry, it's not what the lease drivers want, but that is what you can get some lease drivers to do because of the economics of it.
I understand. So you're pulling a lot of these numbers out based upon your experience and probably your examination of your financial statements, is that correct, your company's financial statements?
Yeah, again, I don't really run my company from the financial statements because they're, my accounting firm produces them so far after the fact, I mean, I, I don't have, you know, I just got my second quarter financials and we're in the fourth quarter, so I don't wanna use that, but we have lots of internal, we use Cab Manager, spreadsheets, a lot of things that we use internally, and like I said, I'm there every day writing checks, I mean, so I kinda have a good feel for it and track a lot of things, so I run it more that way than off of financial statements.
You run it more day-to-day?
Every day, yeah.
Type thing?
Yes.
Okay, but you're allowed, I mean, you have a, a software that allows you to keep track of cash flow expenses and you just wait for the accountant to kind of put it in his formula, I guess?
They'll produce financials so that you can give them to banks and people that are gonna require them.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not, that's not what I'm running it from day-to-day, no. I use our software, Cab Manager.
And is your software, Cab Manager, does that keep count of, let's just go through the revenue?
Tracks, it tracks the cab revenue, yes.
Okay.
Not the lease revenue, it's tracked a different way, because it's, it's tracked through, internally, we wrote our own database for tracking that, a general manager.
Okay, and do you have to manually input your credit card fees or your advertising?
Well, the advertising money is sent to me ACHed into my bank, so I see that it's ACHed into there and the accountant would see that when he sees the bank reconciliations, so in the credit cards, that is managed through a combination of, again, that money is ACHed into your bank as you batch your credit cards on a daily basis, so it's tracked a little bit in Cab Manager, it's a reconciliation of that as well as your processor, you have a program written that reconciles those to see that you're getting the money, you know, there's a, there's a lag in the payments, so it's a little more complicated, but yes, but my accountant's not doing it, no.
Do other cab companies have tester companies to buy their vehicles?
You'd have to ask them, don't know.
Have you ever heard of another cab company having tester vehicles?
I, again, I don't know if they currently, but I would say that I know that if, at one time it might still, Yellow Bell for sure, Lucky for sure, I don't know, I don't know about Western, but, but the majority of them either still does, but for sure at one time did, yes.
Nellis?
Nellis, yes, I don't know if they do now, but yes, they did.
Okay, so let's assume, so I get lucky enough and I get to CPC and would I qualify or somebody could come up to me and say, hey, we're gonna run this, these tests on your vehicles, and say, hey, we're gonna pay 75% of them just like they do for you?
I, maybe if you had a proven track record in a shop that was run efficiently, that you tracked all the records, I'm not sure about the size of your company, but possibly, I, I don't know, you'd have to ask them.
Right, so that's not a decision Desert or Bell or Yellow Checker Star can make for my company, it would be a personal decision between my company and the testing company? You wouldn't have any play in it?
No, I can't stop you from doing it, no.
Right.
Right.
You can't stop me from going out and negotiating with these tester companies, whether it's brakes, air conditioners, stuff like that, right?
No.
Was it your company that did the, the old London-style cabs?
Yes.
And that was, was that one down on the tester, wasn't it?
I don't remember if that was a test or not, I don't think that was a test.
Okay, and I think what it boiled down to is that the air conditioners wouldn't work in Las Vegas, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, they would have lots of problems.
Okay, all right, but this idea of a company coming in and buying your vehicles and using them to test their products is not something that's new to the industry?
I don't know, I've been doing it for a long time.
Right, and so have other companies, right?
Again, I've known they test, I don't know if they got free cars or bought cars, I know they've done testing, I don't know to what specifics, you'd have to ask them those questions, I don't know.
Let me ask you, just based on your company, and you say that they would buy Desert Cab a car, you would take that car out of service and kick it over to Virgin Valley, correct?
Recently, yes.
Recently, how much are they paying, these tester companies, how much are they paying for your, your brand-new car?
Each one is negotiated separately.
Okay, let's just, you have a ballpark as far as an average of what they're paying, I'm not saying the amount, like, okay, I got a Dodge Charger, that's $30,000, they're paying me $20,000, I'm just saying, is there like a percentage that they're kicking?
Yeah, it's, it's more complicated than that, depends on how long the test is going to be, what kind of car it's going to be, if it was a car that I'm already running in my fleet, maybe I would, would not ask them for as much money, if it's a car I've never run before that I don't know anything about, I'm gonna ask for a higher percentage because it's a lot more risky to buy that car, because I don't know how to maintain it and I gotta start stocking a whole new kind of parts because that's a different car, so it, it's very dependent per year, per model, per make, there, there's a lot more to it, so it's not, yeah, I don't, I don't think that I can really tell you an average because, again, there's some that come to me and say, we, we don't want to buy any new cars, how about we buy new motors and you put them in old cars? How about we buy new motors and you put them in old cars? And I'm in a situation where I'm thinking, okay, and, and I can negotiate some deal, I'll do that. So it, it, they're all different, it's not a, it's not really a way to be able to average it out.
Okay, so assuming hypothetically, these testing companies are out there, and I was able to get some form of agreement with these testing companies, and they said that they would pay fifty percent of the car for a brand-new car, is that out of the realm of possibilities?
No, I, anything is possible for it, I don't, it's not in your pro forma, that's why you're asking me.
I'm saying, I mean, yeah, because you believe with me that a pro forma is not an actual, correct?
No, it's a, it's a prediction.
Prediction based upon assumptions?
Yes.
Okay, so if I went back and I assumed that my cars are twenty-nine thousand dollars, but Toyota's gonna give me fifty percent off because they wanna test their new Corolla crossover in Las Vegas in the desert, the thing, that would help my pro formas, wouldn't it? My, my financial condition?
I would, I would tell you that I don't know any car manufacturers that test. Um, most of the companies that test are lubricant companies, not car manufacturers. I would probably ask you, is it possible, sure? I would be saying, okay, well, there is contracts, I have contracts that I would bring in here and show you what, what they are. So, anything is in the realm, but I'm just, was responding to your pro forma and it doesn't work the way it is? If in fact, we're completely wrong and business completely changes and, I, I mean, there, there's, it's endless the things that you could say, I'm just testifying to your pro forma, and none of that is in your pro forma.
Is it even possible to include everything in a pro forma? You've done it before?
Is it possible, I, I would think, no, you, you're probably gonna miss something, sure.
Okay, so it's not-
That's why, that's why we responded to it and said, you're missing a whole bunch of things that we saw at a glance, yeah.
Okay, I know, and I addressed those, correct?
Some of them, sure, yeah.
Would you say ninety percent, hundred percent?
You addressed them, but I don't believe that you addressed them accurately because I believe that it still, as I've just testified, I, I believe that your pro formas, if you use the proper revenue figures of what you're gonna do with thirty-five medallions, forgetting about changing the expenses, don't work, you do not make enough revenue. But, and based on my experience, maybe, again, you know something I don't know, but based on my experience, thirty-five medallions and forty cars cannot make enough money to pay the expenses you're going to have. End of story, for me.
Now, let's just say my name wasn't Brent Carson, but it was Jason Awad. Could he put a thirty-five car license and make it profitable?
I don't, I don't know what his entire expense deal is, so I don't know that.
Okay, so it's just the fact that I'm a new company, I can't, I can't do it?
No, I, all I can go off is the pro forma that you've put in front of me. And the pro forma you put in front of me, I say, in my opinion, does not financially work. From my experience, thirty-five medallions, starting a new company, isn't economically viable because there just isn't enough revenue to cover the expenses that they, and the federal government, and the state government, makes you have to cover. It just, the, the minimum wage laws, all the different things that, that are now piled on top of us, I don't think thirty-five cars can do it, that, that, that's my opinion. And for Jason, if Jason brought in a pro forma, I don't know what his expense structure would be. Yet, again, maybe he had have no expenses, of course, then it would work.
Would it be unlikely, or in your experience, and you've done a lot of other things besides cabs, but to have a, a first-year company not make a net income but operated at a loss?
Oh, I would, I would assume that there's a lot of businesses that probably start and realize that they're gonna be in a tough situation when they start, yeah. I, again, I don't know, I don't know if that's necessarily, I'd, something I'd wanna get into, but, um, yeah, I don't, there are, in my opinion, I don't know them, but I would assume there are businesses that lose money, yes.
Okay, but, uh, at a later date, become profitable?
Or go out of business, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Is there anything in the law, NAC or NRS, that says you must operate at a, with a net income as opposed to an operating loss?
Form of the question being seven oh six?
Seven oh six, yes, sir, sorry.
I, I mean, again, I, I, I take the one that, you know, about the, that it's gotta, that, that you need to be following, the pros obviously will be consistent with the seven oh six, the NRS one five one, and I think in one, talk about it being sound economic conditions and compensable. I, I think that, that, yeah, that they're saying that they don't believe that having a company in the industry that isn't compensable is good for the industry. So I don't, I, yeah, I don't believe that the law should allow a certificate to come in if it's not compensable. I, I don't, I don't think that's, that's good for the industry.
What about allowing a company to continue in bankruptcy? Is that good for it, is that fostering sound economic conditions?
Say it again, what now?
What if a company declares bankruptcy? Does that not fit the requirements of sound economic conditions, in your opinion?
Yeah, I would have to know all the conditions, I don't, I, I don't know. I mean, if a company came in here and asked for a certificate that was bankrupt, should we give them a certificate? I would say no, I would think, I, that, I would, I would be arguing that-
What if a currently certificated carrier, taxi cab company, operating in Las Vegas, filed bankruptcy, would they be in violation, in your opinion, of seven oh six one fifty-one?
I'm gonna overrule that question, there's not an exact objection because it's completely irrelevant.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't even know, know how I would answer it.
Mr. Valavent, I've ruled that that question's not the answer. It's not, counsel, it's not relevant whether, the, the question is, what was their, were they fit, willing, and able at the time that they applied for their CPCN? It's not what other financial conditions might have occurred in mind.
Okay. I'm done with my pro forma questions, should I just go directly into the continuation of his? Okay. Do you know who the last certificated company was, uh, in Las Vegas?
Last one, the board certified?
The board certified, yeah.
Uh, Rick Flavin?
How about Jay Nady?
Jay Nady, sorry.
Okay, Jay Nady owns ACAB, is that correct?
Yes.
Did you intervene in his application?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay, and when he was certificated, how many vehicles did the board give him?
No clue.
If I reckon, if I reference the number sixteen, would you have any reason to doubt that?
No.
Does it sound right, based upon your memory?
I, it doesn't sound right based on my memory, but I don't, I don't have a memory of it.
Okay, well, it's, it's official notice, official record of the TA, would you agree with me on that?
We'll accept that you're saying sixteen, we don't remember.
Okay, and that was back in two thousand and one, is that correct?
I don't recall that, but could have been.
Okay, and is ACAB still operating?
To my knowledge.
Okay, so they started with sixteen cars, and they're still operating twenty-two years later, is that your testimony?
Yes.
Okay, so they started with less than thirty-five and are still operating today?
Yes.
I wanna just, um, are the intervenors accepting the sixteen as a number?
I don't remember. I, I remember that hearing and there was a, a limit, put on what they could operate at the time, but then with the annual review of medallions, they grew, I'm sure. But if he says it's sixteen, okay, we'll accept that representation.
Okay. Did you answer the last one, I'm sorry?
Ask it again, I don't remember.
I think I said, so they started with less than thirty-five and are still operating twenty-two years later today?
If sixty is the-
Correct.
If sixty is the correct number, they have a lot more medallions than that now, but yes, I believe, yet they're still in operation, to my knowledge.
Okay. Why did you oppose their application?
Because I felt that the law said that there was a need for additional medallions, they should be allocated to the companies that were already in existence, and I was, I had been in front of the board asking for more medallions and I wasn't granted them. I, I was willing to service that area if the state would give me the medallions, so I should have got them, not them.
I wanna just, basically, if it's okay with the, the board and Mr. Winter, I'm gonna try to cut some time off, I just wanna see if I'm correct with my memory of your testimony, is that okay with you?
Sure.
Yeah, so tell me if this is an accurate summary of your testimony so far. You believe the industry is currently meeting the needs of the traveling public?
Yes.
Okay, and that there's no need for additional medallions because the industry isn't using all of theirs?
There, I believe that the industry is not using all their medallions, yes.
Okay. From what I've heard, I just kinda wanna cut to Jason's, that you're not saying that I'm not fit to operate morally or anything like that, it's just that my company, based upon the pro forma, will not be profitable?
I, yes, I, I believe your, the pro forma that you presented is not compensable, and I don't believe you can create one that would be compensable with thirty-five medallions.
Okay, any other evidence against my application besides the financials?
I have any other evidence, I mean, I just, I was looking at the pro forma.
Okay. And I believe we said, and I think you agreed, that the only financial requirement that the, uh, NTA has is the twenty percent debt debt relief requirement?
No, I don't, we'll agree with that, I, I, I believe that, again, I haven't memorized.
One five one.
The seven oh six point one five one book says that it needs to be more than that, it needs to be, you read it exactly.
We'll take official notice of seven six one five, thank you.
You're gonna have to follow it.
Mr. Valavent, you've been here for all of the hearings, correct? Last month, or two months ago, almost, most of the stuff, right?
In this case?
Yeah.
Yeah, not, maybe not some of the evidentiary stuff, but this part of the board, yes.
Okay. Do you, were you here when, uh, Ms. Martinez got up during the public comment and talked about a story about two older three people couldn't get a ride?
Who?
Ms. Martinez.
Oh, she's, she's, she's secretary. Again, I, I just think of her as Katana, I never even, or last- You just said Katana, yeah, yes, I remember that, yeah.
Okay, what, what do you recall about her, uh, tell me what you remember about her statement?
She was inside a, uh, maybe a churches or fried chicken place or something, and there were people that were stuck and needed a ride.
Right.
And so she helped them out somehow.
Okay.
She gave a ride in her personal car, if I remember correctly, yeah.
It was Popeyes. I'm just kidding, I had to ask her to, uh, churches was a better guest than mine. If those two people were here today, what would you tell those two people that couldn't get a ride for hours?
I tell them, you mean?
What would you say to these people that were begging for a ride, not to be stranded somewhere? Did you have an excuse for it?
Form of the question's off, begging for a ride, I mean, I don't know, does this call for speculation?
Well, I, I don't even know what they did.
Mr. Valavent, now take that as an objection, it's sustained, sustained, because this isn't relevant for whether, that particular question does not ask for a relevant answer. There is a question that could be propounded, but it is not that one.
And then I'll go back to my original part of that question, without the speculation. If they were sitting here today, would you have a comment for them?
That's not-
Didn't hear it.
It's not relevant.
Okay. Just so, Blair, is, based upon, is your objection to this application solely based upon the, um, pro forma that I prepared? Or is it something more industry-wide, that no matter what company came in here, they couldn't make it work?
I checked the form of the question, it's an either word, it's compound. Does he have any other evidence or comments under the statute, other than the pro forma? I think that's a fair question.
I'm gonna overrule, it is a compound question, but I think it's understandable, and I'll let Mr. Valavent handle it.
Oh, ask me that, where's it?
Needs to have it restated.
Yeah, okay, so my testimony, basically on your testimony, is that you've been, that you're posing this application based upon the pro forma that I submitted, that I was just going to ask, is that yes?
My testimony so far has been about this pro forma and all the inadequacies I seen, yes, that's true.
Okay, any other evidence that relates to any of the other elements of, uh, application process or qualifications of an application?
I don't believe there's a need for another taxi cab in the industry. I believe we have enough tax cabs in the industry, and that there are medallions that are within the industry, that there is no economic good industry benefit to add a new operator and thirty-five more medallions. I don't, I don't think it's especially, when it's not compensable, I don't, it doesn't make any sense to me, so.
So it's your testimony that regardless of who the applicant is, no more cabs are needed?
I do not believe that there's a need for another cab company with thirty-five medallions in this industry, and I don't believe it's compensable, that is correct, wouldn't matter if it was somebody I didn't know, would probably be worse than somebody I know, so yes, I-
So that, that's kinda what I'm saying, is that, um, even if I came to you with, uh, a pro forma that was based upon actual figures and everything like that, everything looked good, you would still oppose me saying there is no need?
I don't believe that there is a need. Do I believe that there are occasions where there, somebody can't get service? I believe that's for any business, yes, I, I believe that happens here and there, but I don't think that's solved by bringing another cab company in with thirty-five medallions that are going to have independent contractors that are gonna not go pick up somebody at Popeyes, they're gonna operate on the strip like everybody else does, they're gonna go where the business is and the money is. I, we have enough medallions in the industry right now that are there available, that we, we don't need more.
But they're not all being used?
They're not all being used because they aren't all needed.
Okay.
And they can't economically be used.
If they're not needed, why don't you give those medallions back to the taxi cab authority?
Well, I am using mine, the other companies aren't using theirs, I'm using the majority of them.
Would you agree that if you're not using the medallion, you should return it?
I don't believe that's the way it works, I think it's, that once they've been given to us, they're ours, and we're paying the fee annually, so I don't know why the state would even want them back, they're getting money for them while they're sitting in someone's drawer, so.
Right, so I mean, if I get thirty-five cars, I'm gonna be paying three hundred bucks, the state's gonna get ten thousand dollars a year, right? So is that a factor that they should consider, is that more revenue for their agency?
Yeah, it would be a question to them, not me.
Okay, and, okay, I don't have any more further questions.
Ordin- Uh, I do have a couple of questions, although Mr. Carson got at one of them, so I'm gonna continue along that line, ask Mr. Valavent. First, thank you for lending your expertise to the hearing and the board, the applicants, the public. Um, let me ask you this question, you, you mentioned that there is no need for there to be another cab company. I've talked about the thirty-five medallions not being enough to be profitable. Is there a need for there not to be another cab company?
Is there a need for there not to be?
Sure, the competition itself, under the law, is not a reason to oppose or deny, let's say deny, uh, so, so what you're saying-
Competition alone.
Competition alone, itself, alone, yeah. Competition alone or itself is not a reason to deny an application, but it sounds like what you're saying is there is no need for that kind of competition. Is there a need for there not to be an additional thirty-five medallions issued to another cab company?
I believe that I don't know if it's a need, but I would I believe that granting it to something that's not compensable is bad for the industry.
Okay.
Yes.
So then so then we're we're gonna you're focusing on the the fitness, let's say, whether or not the company can be run at profitability. So let me ask you this question. If the app was approved by the board and Mr. Carson, let's say, spent the the capital that he's dedicated to this over the next couple of years and ran the company into bankruptcy and then, let's just say, out of existence, what specifically do you believe in your expertise would be the impact of marketplace? And by the marketplace, I mean the existing industry, existing permit is public transportation sector.
Well, I would think that if while it was running that way towards losing more money than if I was operating it, I would be figuring out where I could cut costs, which would be, in my opinion, would not be things that you guys could see, which would be the vehicles because you'll redline them. So I would have to find other ways to cut costs that probably aren't. You wouldn't want me to be doing, but it's hard for you to see, which would be the management of my employee, disciplining them, handling customer complaints and things like that. So I believe that if I was getting rid of those middle managers that were doing that, then I would have drivers that were probably doing some bad things out there and that would, again, tarnish the industry because I don't think when somebody has a bad cab experience, it is directed at the cab company you happen in, it's directed at all of us. So I think that as you're running the company leaner and leaner and leaner, you're going to have a bad image on the customer base because I think that's where it would show up first. Then the second piece would be is the other place I would be cutting because I was for my own existence would be in the safety of my drivers in the form of monitoring the radios and things like that, which you could get away with until something bad happened, you know, somebody's in a robbery situation or something. And I think that also would hurt the employee base, lease base of drivers. And again, I don't think they would necessarily direct that anger or reputation towards the company that did it. They would be, it's not safe to be a cab driver in Vegas because, you know, they don't care about their drivers and they don't watch out for them and they're not monitoring like they're supposed to and the TA is not making them. So I think there'd be a lot of things that as you were looking to ways to save money that could have detriments to the whole industry as you took it down that road. Because again, I don't believe that it anything that happens is directed at the company that did it. They were all kind of like the generic like Kleenex, right? I mean, or I mean, we're we're just all gonna get thrown into one bunch. So I think those are two big glaring ones. I think it would happen that would would hurt the whole industry and no one would no one even know the company was gone. It would just reflect badly on the industry.
Good, thank you. Mr. Valverde, how many certificates do you hold from the TA?
Two.
So it's Desert and Virgin Valley?
Virgin Valley, correct.
Which is Blue Desert LLC, but the certificate is Virgin.
You operate.
Yeah, okay, yes. And how many medallions does Desert Cab have?
Two hundred and twenty nine.
And?
Virgin Valley, one thirty two.
One thirty two, okay, well, that wasn't what I was gonna ask, but I knew you know I was gonna get to that. So how many cars can you put on the road? What's the maximum you can put on a car for Desert Cab?
Two hundred and twenty nine at any one time.
No, I mean practically. Could right now, you get on your phone, tell your general manager, put two hundred and twenty nine cars out into Desert Cab. Do you have that many cars or that many drivers to do that?
I have more than enough cars and I have more than enough drivers. Depending on what the business is out there.
Right.
If I if I took my drivers to fill up the cars and it wasn't busy, I wouldn't have those drivers for long. Does that make any sense? They're gonna go work someplace where they're not gonna make them work on a Monday.
I understand.
Now, it happens to be people like to work on Monday day because it's a good day. So it it's so to answer your question, today, Monday day, I could probably find people to put them all out. It's harder on the lease because, again, it's hard to have a team lease. So a lot of cars, lease cars might not be out on Monday day, but so it it all depends. I I have I have more than two hundred and twenty nine drivers at Desert Cab. I have three hundred and twenty five cab drivers. And then I have another two hundred and fifty, the lease from Desert Cab. And I have two hundred and ninety cars. So a lot more cars than I have medallions, but that's because, you know, on a Monday or a Tuesday, I might have sixty, seventy cars that are out of service. Not all of them are broke down. A bunch are due for preventive maintenance, a bunch are broke down, a bunch are being held in for test testing stuff. So I mean, that's why I have so many extra spares.
I understand. I I they so you can if market conditions dictated, you believe you can get enough drivers and enough vehicles?
Last Friday night, all my medallions.
Okay.
Well, there were there were some Virgin Valley medallions that weren't out because I didn't have enough cars, but all the desert medallions were on the road.
Okay, all the desert ones, but not all the Virgin Valley?
Correct, because I don't have enough cars yet.
Okay, and I think you testified you have a unique situation because Desert Cab can get brand new cars through your long history with these testing companies.
It comes in waves, but yes, as recently, you know, during COVID, no, leading up to COVID a little bit. But a unique opportunity has arisen recently because as everybody is talking about moving to EVs, these test companies that test lubricants are worried that there's not gonna be fleets that have internal combustion engines in them anymore. So I have all kinds of people, these testing lubricant companies that I've worked with for a long time, coming to me and saying, we need some more cars before you can't get them anymore. Go get us these, get us these, get us these and get that get the motors because they know what the supply chain issues are. So I've had a lot more offers to buy cars. If I in fact did not own Virgin Valley, I probably would not take those cars because I don't need them.
Okay, that's not that was my question. What I'm trying to figure out and what you're explaining is you can get new cars because of your relationship with these testing companies. If you did not have that relationship with the testing company and you were just buying cars, do you believe in today's market, you could get all the cars you need for Desert Cab Company?
The fact that I have the tests doesn't make it easier for me to get the cars. It makes more sense for me to go spend thirty five thousand dollars on a car because I don't have to spend thirty five thousand dollars. So right now, if you want to go buy a car and you ask what it is, you're gonna be like, are you kidding me? That's ridiculous. You're charging me five thousand dollars over sticker because they can. So I wouldn't buy a car, but because the test company is gonna pay for it. I say test company, they're charging a premium for it. It doesn't it doesn't pencil to buy
Okay, then I guess that's not what I was getting at, so I appreciate that. So are you telling me that if you were paying full market price for cars and there's a premium on them now, you the cars would be available for Desert Cab?
With a long lead time, yes. You have to order them, you know, months and months away.
Oh, okay, so right now you couldn't pick up the phone and and get a bunch of it. It might take months for you to fill all that out, had you not had this other relationship?
Correct. Right now, right now, I pay a premium, I can get them a little bit faster, but the majority of cars, even though in a premium, you're still gonna have to wait for them. They're not sitting on the lots.
Because I that is my understanding, and I wanted to confirm some of the industry is new cars are not available.
Correct.
When you go to a new car lot, it is rare that you drive away with a car right now.
Correct.
And so now, Virgin Valley does not have all the cars that it needs to use its medallions because you've chosen as a business decision not to go out in the market and buy used cars, you're buying them from Desert.
Right, Desert was getting a good deal. Somebody would buy them, and it so it had more cars than it needed. So I take cars out of that fleet and move them over.
If you did not have that situation, if you're operating Virgin Valley as a solo company, do you believe you would be able to get the number of cars that you have today?
I could have possibly grown that big over the last whatever twenty one some months, but I wouldn't have because it wouldn't have made economic sense. It wouldn't, it wasn't really compensable, but it is when I can get the cars.
Right, but so you're testifying it wouldn't be compensable, but the cars are available? Or are they not available? I don't know.
Again, they're over some big, long lead time, they are available.
Okay, okay, so there'd be a lead time. They're not instantly available as we would have assumed a few years ago.
Correct.
Okay. One last question. And I know you're not gonna have a hard and fast number and that would be unfair. You were asked about a certificate that was granted twenty one years ago, of which you were a party to that case. And in your earlier testimony, while you didn't go through and come up with a a number that it takes to operate a cab in southern Nevada, have the regulatory and maintenance costs of running a cab gone up in twenty one years?
Though all of those have gone up, but the biggest difference is the cab drivers were not in twenty one years ago, you didn't have to pay cab driver minimum wage. It's a commission job, commission is the commission. They were exempt from minimum wage. When that law changed about minimum wage and whatever you wanted, the ACA, that the whole healthcare thing, those are two things that dramatically changed the wage side of. We did twenty one years ago, we didn't have to declare tips. We didn't have to pay minimum wage and we didn't have to provide health insurance. So those cabs, it was, I mean, the wage model is the is that was that big gigantic number that now is crazy when it wasn't back then. That makes any sense, so.
It makes sense, but I'm I'm trying to get a scope. Is it twice as much to run a cab, operate a cab today? Is it twenty five percent more? Is it only ten percent more? I'm trying to get a feel for that and clearly the other interveners over the lunch break might try to figure that out for their companies. And I know every company is gonna be different, but you're you're the expert that we have under oath at this at this moment.
Yeah, I don't, I would say considerably more than double, but I don't know what that number is.
Considerably more than double. Okay, I think that's
And it's not just those things.
Good enough for this price quiz.
Yeah, regulations, I mean, it's just endless, all the things.
Sure, I understand.
So much harder now than it was then.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
We'll be in Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, could I could I so so you we mentioned a couple of times thirty five not enough to be profitable or compensable. And you mentioned at one point today, I think that it might take hundreds, given that, let's say, Virgin Valley is at one thirty two. Do you have a best estimate as to how many medallions it would take to be to be profitable? What would be your best guess as to the minimum number it would take?
You know what, I I didn't run the the, I mean, you could sit down to kind of figure that stuff out. I think that the because Brent has the those things that you need to have in there for the expenses and they're not completely utilized across thirty five cars, you know, but you gotta have all those managers. But I don't know exactly what that number would be, but I just don't think that the thirty five can get the income. I'd have to go take that whole thing and then figure out how you get to the revenue to make it support. So I don't have a quick answer. I don't I don't know what that number is.
Let's say
But I thought a lot more.
Let's say an expert like Katana, who's a program officer and this is in with within her realm, decides that the number, say, is seventy or some something like that, eighty, ninety, whatever whatever it might be. If Mr. Carson's application was for that many, where you thought his company could be minimally profitable, would you still oppose the application?
Yeah, I don't believe that we need another company and more medallions. I think we have the medallions within the industry and that the the industry will be putting those out as they're needed when the business is there. The the fact that all the medallions aren't being used is because they're not needed on certain days of the week. So I think that, yeah, I I don't I don't necessarily, I I would still be opposed. I don't believe that we need another operator.
So is it safe to say there's no situ there's no scenario in which an applicant from outside the industry was applying for a certificate that that you wouldn't oppose?
Well, if if all the medallions were being used and he was applying, I'd be saying you should be giving them to us. So again, yeah, I don't I'm again, I I don't think that I haven't thought that through as to what would be that scenario. I'd I but yeah, I don't I don't think we need another more medallions than another company.
Thank you.
We'll be in recess till one fifty.